Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 3rd, 2019 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy and delighted to have each of you with us this tonight. This time, I would ask Ms. LaMagna to review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All of the items pertaining, all of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items where they have considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under Administrative Item 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item 7A is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the items or items you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes.
When you approach a lectern, please be clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment forum, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting. Order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. LaMagna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
And with the invocation and the pledge?
Yes, ma'am. A second. It's, uh, we have the invocation by Commissioner Henry and the pledge by Commissioner Reed.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather. We ask and pray your blessings. We ask and pray that you will bless every service person. Right now, we ask and pray that everyone will have a safe and happy fourth. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the May 15th, 2019, regular meeting of the city commission and the June 5th, 2019, regular meeting of the city commission.
So move.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have a second? A second from Commissioner Traeger. If there's no questions or comments, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Now move on to our agenda. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to add to the agenda Bike Week sponsorship donations to Agenda Item 9, I mean, excuse me, 8F. Commissioner Danette Henry. Two hundred, uh, $250 to One Bad Decision Inc., $500 to Bethune-Cookman University, Mail Explorers for a general donation, and $250 to Volusia Volunteers in Medicine for general donation. Pull item 10A, item 10C, and 10D.
Motion for a present.
All right, we have a motion, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number six is a presentation, is the Bennett Swamp Rehydration and Conservation Project.
Mr. Mayor, um, we had a ribbon cutting recently out at Bennett Swamp, and we had members from, uh, the Department of Environmental Regulation, as well as St. John's Water Management District. And, uh, what I'd like to do is show you the, um, the presentation that was made out there and tell you a little bit about it as we get into that program. So, they'll run the clip, please.
The city of Daytona Beach is strategically investing in critical infrastructure to improve the quality of our community. Recently, the city completed the Bennett Swamp Rehydration and Conservation Project. Lauded by industry experts as visionary and groundbreaking, this innovative and multifaceted project has far-reaching environmental benefits. It consists of an advanced distribution system built from the city's West Side Regional Water Reclamation Facility to Bennett Swamp. This will allow reclaimed water to be distributed into the 1,425-acre swamp through 18 strategically-placed dispersal units during periods of low reuse demands. By redirecting this reclaimed water into Bennett Swamp, we are recharging the aquifer which supplies our drinking water, helping to create a healthy ecosystem for numerous wildlife species, rehydrating the swamp, and reducing the amount of water and nutrients discharged into the Halifax River. The cost of this $5.3 million project was offset by a grant of $1.7 million from the St. John's River Water Management District and $2.5 million from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The one-time expense to create the Bennett Swamp Rehydration and Conservation Project yields continuous recurring benefits that positively impacts the city's citizens and environment. By linking and leveraging our assets, we are investing in our future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What, uh, this is a project we undertook a couple of years ago. Uh, it's $5,336,000 was the, uh, cost of the project. The city has a little over a million dollars into the project. The rest was from the state agencies, and, uh, it, uh, will enable us to remove discharges from the Halifax River and, uh, you know, push our goal to get out of the river at some point in the future and, and, uh, provide for the rehydration of the aquifer for future water use for this entire community.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on the commission? Appreciate that. I asked that you all do that because I was, uh, at the ribbon cutting and took the tour of the swamp, and, uh, it was, you know, one of the most impressive, uh, ribbon cuttings that I have had the pleasure of participating in, uh, to see us rehydrate an area that was clearly, uh, in environmental, uh, stress, as well as to, uh, it does a few other things also. It helps us, it'll enable us to be able to pump down water, um, when we are, uh, facing a hurricane or some other, uh, excessive rain flow because we're able to then move water in this direction at an earlier, uh, pa, uh, pace and time. So it's, it's, has a lot of advantages and, um, one of my most, um, pleasing, uh, ventures that, to see our city, uh, participate in. So thank you for your leadership and to all of the staff that's been, uh, involved in this. Okay.
Moving on to item number seven, this is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item that's on the consent agenda. Our first speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I know Quanita's addressed this in the past. Uh, this goes back to 17, 2017. A lot of our things are going multiples, like we didn't expect it to be a two-year project. Uh, first step, we didn't expect to be a two-year project. When these things last longer than we anticipate, could we have, at some point in that two-year period, an upgrade saying why it's taking so long? I think it's just informative, it helps things. I forget, and I'm sure other people do as well. And secondly, um, with regard to the swamp, uh, I know you proposed that about 10 years ago or so. Uh, we were pumping like $3 million into, uh, the Halifax. You were going to do a pipe. Are we, are we still taking the, the water from, uh, Bethune Point out there? So that, so that's not going in the river either?
This is coming from regional right now, but Bethune Point will be connected. It is connected, but it's not, that's not functional yet.
Okay, but all of that will go?
Good, that's, that's the goal.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed. No further questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number 9A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division. Land Development Code text amendment, amend Articles 5, 6, and 11. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code in relation to brew pubs, craft distilleries, microbreweries, microwineries, amending Sections 5.2.8 and 5.3.8 containing the list of principal and accessory uses respectively, to revise the listed permitted and special principal uses and permitted accessory uses for all industrial and tourist zoning districts, and the BR1, BR2, BA, AG, RDB1, RDB2, RDB3, RDB4, RDB5, RDB8, RDB9, RDD1, RDED2, RDD3, RDD4, RDD6, RDD7, RDM1, RDM2, RDM3, RDM4, RDM5, PDG, and PDRD zoning districts. Amending Section 5.2.8 principal use standards, amending Section 5.3.8 accessory use standards, amending Section 6.2 parking space standards, amending Section 11.5 definitions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
And a motion from, uh, Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Um, do we have any questions? We have any speakers?
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. Um, this is a 10-year, uh, problem. We passed an ordinance to help the establishments on Main Street. Uh, we changed the rules. As long as they had $10,000 worth of equipment, we presumed they would serve food, and they're allowed to sell hard liquor. All right? Uh, one establishment, two weeks after, uh, they got their license, took out their kitchen. And that's been a major problem with me. Here, is there any way a business can get this license? They're okay. We can turn to liquor, which they did when they weren't supposed to, and this is a great idea, but I, we're so used to things getting warped and changing around. I want some kind of guarantee that it will not turn into just another bar. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis.
Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. Speaking on this because I understand the ability about alcohol and on-street drugs. I want to talk about the off-street parking and loading. Uh, I want to make sure I put in the homeless issue there to make sure all citizens are treated equal, even how they dress. A lot of times, you can't tell who somebody is just because of the way they dress. So, my issue is, I want to make sure this is an eating and drinking establishment with the parking that matches with it. Like John Nicholson said, let's not just let this have another bar. It's one of the reasons why the homeless are the homeless. Thank you.
That was my final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, do we have any questions or comments from the commission? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Item number 9B is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. It's an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 391.8 plus or minus acres of property located west of North Tamoka Farms Road and east of LPGA Boulevard and north of West International Speedway Boulevard from SFR 5 Single Family Residential to PDG Plan Development General District, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Integrated LPGA Plan District Agreement with American SW30 Investments LLC to develop a mixed residential development and approval of the Integrated LPGA Phase A1 Preliminary Plaid, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date. And on behalf, the applicant has requested that this item be continued to the July 17th, 2019, meeting.
Motion to continue July 17th.
Second.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, if we have no further questions or comments, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Item number 9C is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Proportionate Fair Share Agreement with American SW30 Investments LLC and the County of Volusia, providing for the proportionate fair share contribution by American SW30 Investments LLC relating to transportation facility concurrency for the American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Project, generally located west of North Tamoka Farms Road, east of LPGA Boulevard, south and east of Municipal Stadium, and north of West International Speedway Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date. And on behalf of the applicant, they've asked this item be continued to the July 17th regular city commission meeting.
Continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I could jump in and just comment on those last two items, this was the one I talked about with the stoplight at Grand Champion and LPGA, or, uh, ISB and, uh, Mr. Watts is here from Calico, representing the, uh, the applicant here. The county threw in a curveball that, a year into the negotiations with this, they decided that the stoplight wasn't eligible for funding. Um, but the developer actually is sticking by his guns and, and his commitment to put that stoplight in, and is going to do it anyways. Um, and they've come up with a very creative way to, uh, to amend the development agreement to where future development in that area that will utilize that intersection will then reimburse the developer for costs that they incurred related to this. So that's what we'll see when this comes back on the 17th, but I want it, you know, developers get a bad name a lot of times for, for doing things that aren't above board. Uh, these guys are really doing the right thing for the community by, by sticking with their commitment to put that stoplight in.
Thank you. And I, I noticed we didn't have, uh, any community folks here tonight, so that means that there's been a lot of communication and keeping the channel open, and, uh, I appreciate your work and, and yours commitment to, to doing this. Means a lot. Uh, any further questions or comments?
Okay, moving on to item number 9D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Mason Avenue BTS Mason Industrial Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the Mason Avenue BTS Mason Industrial Transportation Improvements Proportionate Fair Share Agreement with CF Toucan DAB LLC and the County of Volusia, providing for the proportionate fair share contribution by CF Toucan DAB LLC relating to transportation facility concurrency for the Mason Avenue BTS Project located at 2350 Mason Avenue Lot 1 and 2400 Mason Avenue Lot 2, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have Mr. Mark Watts here, if you have any questions.
Okay. No questions for Mr. Watts. Uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A was pulled from the agenda. We're going to move on to item number 10B, it's the city manager's office, the Beautification Tree Advisory Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Beautification and Tree Advisory Board to serve a term expiring December 31st, 2022, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint one member to the Beautification Tree Advisory Board for Zone 6. We have received one applicant from Patricia Hurd.
I move that we accept Patricia Hurd on the beautification board, second, representing Zone 6.
All right, we'll take a motion from, uh, our commissioner from Zone 6, and I believe Zone 1 Commissioner Traeger has seconded that. Um, so, uh, this, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Did we have any public comment on that?
I'm sorry, no, we did not.
No public comment? Okay. Um, those opposed, same sign. Zero, uh, motion carries seven zero. Welcome to the beautification board, Ms. Hurd.
Okay, moving on, item 10C and 10D were pulled from the agenda tonight. Moving on to item 10E, it's the city manager's office downtown redevelopment board appointment resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the downtown redevelopment board to serve two-year terms ending December, providing an effective date.
This agenda item is to appoint one member to the downtown redevelopment board. The membership term of Daniel Harshaw has expired, and he would like to be reappointed. We have no other applicants. May we hear a motion?
Motion to reappoint Daniel Harshaw.
Second.
All right, we'll take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Traeger.
I have no speakers for this item.
Um, those, uh, in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 10F, it's the city manager's office Leisure Services Advisory Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing four members to the Leisure Services Advisory Board, appointing three members to serve terms expiring December 31st, 2020, and appointing one member to serve a term expiring December 31st, 2021, and providing an effective date.
The membership terms of Duane Murray at large, Carol Julian, Zone 4, and John Huger, Zone 6, have expired, and all three individuals would like to be reappointed. We have no additional applications. May we hear a motion?
Motion to reappoint all three.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All those, uh, if there's no public comment.
I don't have any speakers for this item, no.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, Zone 2 has an open position, and we've received one application from Bradford Gonzalez. Commissioner Delgado.
I'll move to reappoint, accept his petition.
Second.
All right, we'll take a motion, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Traeger. Uh, motion from Commissioner Delgado.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I did have Mr. Gonzalez sign up for the public speaking section about volunteering for the city board. I didn't know if he wanted to speak during this item.
Come on up, sir. Just state your name. I was wondering, because I, I actually wanted to know who, who it was, so I'm glad you're here. Yes, awesome.
So, my name is Bradford Gonzalez. I live at 424 Riverview Boulevard on the beach side. I've been coming to the beach, Daytona Beach, with my family for 30 years, and finally I decided, uh, I gotta move to the beach. And so that's what I did. And every community that I've lived in, I've always served in some way to that community. So now Daytona Beach is my community as well, and I want to thank you for, uh, the proposal and for the acceptance, uh, to this leisure board. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Thank you for serving. Welcome.
So we had a motion and a second.
Motion and a second, right?
Yes.
So all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, okay, we'll move on to, um, comments and inquiries from our commission. Uh, we commence tonight with Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out a couple of things that are happening in Zone 6. They're part of our manager's report. I'm not sure if the audience has that. Uh, but you know, the streetscape that we've been speaking of between Orange Avenue and International Speedway on MLK, a work on that will begin on July 15th, and, um, I, I hope that we, I know we had a public meeting. I'm not sure if we've reached out to those, um, business owners again, just to kind of let them know the exact date it's happening. Um, I'll probably walk that myself and just kind of let them know where it begins, because you know, we've had things begin in one place before and, and life happens. So, just to make them aware. And then the other is a public meeting for beautification on, uh, Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard. Commissioner, um, May and I share this street, and on July 16th, there's going to be a beautification meeting held at New Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church for anyone living and having a business within 500 feet, and anyone else that would like to come. We'd just like some citizen input on what we're going to do and, um, let them be a part of that change. So again, that's on July 16th, and that's at 6:00 PM at Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church. The church is right in the community. When we thought about where we could take this meeting, a lot of the business owners on that street are like one and two people, and so when you leave your business, you don't need to be coming all the way to the Dickerson Center or to Midtown for a meeting. If it can be right down the street, then perhaps you can leave for 10 to 15 minutes. Assistant City Manager Betty Goodman and I walked it, and Commissioner May, I believe you, and Charles Bryant walked it, uh, to let those business owners know what was coming and to get their input. In event that they can't join us on this date, we gave them information on how to contact Ms. Goodman to put any input in that they'd like to share if they can't meet us at that meeting, but you're all welcome to come. Now, you know, it's been said that, that oftentimes, that a lot of things I bring before you are social events, but I want you to know that social events also increase the quality of life, that when nothing's going on and nothing's happening, then there's nothing happening. So I, I appreciate the things that we have been able to do through this commission for this particular zone. And then before I, I conclude, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lakishma Shaw in the audience. This is my intern from Bethune-Cookman. She is interning in the Human Resources Department at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. We actually have three young people. We also have, um, a Darylus, Frederick Darylus from Bethune-Cookman, and we have Nathan Butts, um, from FIU, interning at, uh, Embry-Riddle this summer. And Lakishma, this is her second. She really loved it. She came to our last meeting, and she was so enthralled by what all we did and, and what she got to hear, she, she's back again tonight. So that's Lakishma. So then I want to say to each and every one of you to have a happy and safe and blessed fourth, and I will see you when I see you.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioner Traeger?
Uh, I was at the opening of the Daytona Autograph Hotel in, uh, One Daytona. I think it'll be another destination spot like Hard Rock with, uh, all racing-themed, very nice, very pretty, and, um, the police department had a benefit dinner. Uh, if I, Captain Capri would tell us a little bit about it?
Uh, yeah, we had a spaghetti dinner fundraiser for one of our officers who's battling cancer, and we raised about $4,500 for him to help him offset some of the costs for the medical bills. So it was well-attended. I think we had a couple hundred people there, raffled off a lot of stuff, and it's just one of many fundraisers we've been doing to, to help them out. So, appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And don't forget all the events going on July 4th and July 4th weekend. Uh, we're at the boardwalk in Main Street, and everybody have a happy and safe 4th of July.
Awesome. Uh, good, uh, good evening. I asked the city attorney to send around some legislature in other cities about, uh, single-use plastic straws. I didn't know if we wanted to do anything as a city commission about that. Other cities in Volusia County have enacted various degrees of that. Uh, I think New Smyrna even is, are they banning single-use plastic in some? In, on city, on city grounds or something like that? I don't know. I mean, I think they're going a little bit further, but I think, um, I, I didn't know if that was something that we wanted to talk about and hear from our constituents what they think, or, you know, other cities are doing it. Um, the state legislature left it to the cities, right, to decide what they want to do, so there's not a statewide, uh, uniform rule about it. Um, you know, personally, I'm in favor of anything that protects the environment, and I think we could certainly use less, uh, plastic trash like that, but I don't want to, you know, enforce that on people, so I'd like to hear what other people thought. And I think it's a good time to at least talk about it, so we'll hear what people have to say about it. a good time to at least talk about it, so to hear what people have to say about it, and if it's something we want to do. It looks like a pretty simple law to pass, whether it's, if it's something we want to do, it may just be seen, but it doesn't look like incredibly difficult thing to, to draft up. So that was really the only thing I wanted to bring up for discussion tonight at the short meeting, so just to hear people's thoughts on that.
I have a question. So the legislature passed bills that would prohibit cities or counties from putting those restrictions in place, and then the governor vetoed it, correct?
That's correct.
Do we know why the legislature took that position? Because I haven't seen any science behind this, about whether or not single use plastic straws actually create any kind of environmental problem. So, I mean, yeah, it sure feels good. I know all the universities, all the kids are thinking it's a great thing, but I just, I mean, I'm not a big fan of enacting legislation just because people think it's cool. I think we need to have some science behind it, and understand what the problem is, and my suspicion is the, the legislature probably took some of that into consideration when they, when both houses, both chambers, you know, passed, passed bills that said, you know, this is not something that should be, you know, done at a, you know, haphazardly throughout the state. I mean, 67 counties and, you know, 1,000 cities, it's, you know, it, it can be a mess out there for anybody who wants to try new business, and like, you know, as a restaurant in Florida, if you're trying to have one, more than one location based on, you know, inconsistent rules. I'm just, I, I just don't know enough about it to say whether I think it's a good idea or a bad idea.
I think it's one worth exploring. So I'd like to, to know why and what cities are doing, so if staff could come back with that. I'm, I'm in agreement that not making laws just to make laws, but I'd like to know more about it because others are doing it. So there obviously is something to it, so I'd like to know.
Well, I mean, I'm totally in favor of having a discussion about it, and the reality is, there's a lot of science that just supports that plastic is environmentally catastrophic to our community, you know, for so many, on so many fronts. So there is a lot of science, as a matter of, you know.
Well, straws.
Well, straws are plastic, and, you know, and they are, one that, that, that many people see as a, a form of low hanging fruit, to begin to eliminate plastics from the environment. Other municipalities are doing things in other places, they're, they're charging people for bags. So in other words, there's a, a tax on bags, up to like 15 cents. So if you charge people for bags, then it makes people become more disciplined. It's not that you're not allowing them to have bags, but if I know I'm gonna have 10 bags, I, I may figure another way reusing my plastic bags. So there are a lot of ways that communities are going about trying to contribute, and a lot of it is in reaction to our choice to leave the Paris Agreement, and so cities are now seeing that they need, feeling as though they need to do what they can to add to some environmental constraints and regulations. So, I'm all in favor of, of having a discussion about it.
Could I ask a question? I guess that would include the water bottles that we have here as well, and we'd have to not use them, and we would have to go to glass or metal, and I think you brought that up, yeah, a few months ago. Would that include sort of, I mean, we could start with us, right? And we could start with that and not have this, and use glass, and set a good example, as good stewards of the environment. Just a thought.
Yeah, certainly a thought, but the other, the other thought is that you have to, you know, look at, look at it total, in a total, large picture. This is a lot easier to recycle, and gets recycled at a far higher proportion than rate than plastic straws do. So, you know, I'm not here to debate here or there on it, it's just something I think that is certainly worthwhile of our, of our consideration, as our colleague has had some of the research done, I started perusing it, hadn't immersed myself in it yet, but I certainly plan to.
Mr. Mayor, I had an occasion to eat in Orlando, and I don't recall the restaurant, but the pasta was their straw.
Yeah, I had that this weekend. It was at Martinis in Daytona, they, they have just a pasta straw.
So it was kind of neat. I don't know if it transfers from glass to glass. It worked.
Yeah, but it worked.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I, my question is about straws, you know, I mean, certainly the, it's indisputable that, that people do not do a good job of recycling. I think we've all seen stories about what's happening with China not buying our, you know, our recyclables anymore. A lot of waste companies are now taking everything to the dump, you know, so I don't know that moving to another, something other than plastic, if we chose to expand this to be more than straws, to actually try and do something that would be perhaps noticeable, at least, within the community, you know, I'm not sure that we could move to anything that wouldn't eventually end up to, you know, in the dump. I mean, like I said, the, the science behind this is, is gotten more complicated, as things like the, the waste energy plants have become economically infeasible, you know, like I said, the same with China is a huge problem. You know, I, I just feel like we're, we're looking at a tree when we got a problem with the forest. So, the, the straw part of this is the, is my issue, not the, there certainly is an issue we need to address.
Well, we need to start somewhere, and I'm doing some perusing, and it says, "Plastic straws are usually bad for the ocean." It's estimated that we use over 500 million every day in America, and most of those end up in our oceans, polluting the water and killing marine life. We want to encourage people to stop using plastic straws for good. If we don't act now, by 2050, there would be more plastic in the ocean than fish.
And that's, yeah, that's, that's because a lot of the stuff that isn't going to China is getting dumped in the ocean, and, you know, so there, the being more plastic in the ocean than fish is talking about.
I know, it's talking about.
Everything.
Everything, I know that. I was just reading a little excerpt, it didn't require.
No, it's, it certainly is a significant issue that we, that we are not doing much about right now, so.
So we can start somewhere. So we'll research straws.
Well, I think New Smyrna also had, did other, I think New Smyrna has a, they talked about single use plastic on government buildings and things like that. I think New Smyrna has, there's, there's different things that different cities are doing. We can see if we like some, all none, you know, our own solution, whatever it may be, but leave Diet Mountain do out of it.
I wasn't going there.
I refill these. I refill these. But I, I just appreciate that, I just thought it was something we should talk about, it's timely, and, you know. So that's all I have, thank you all very much.
All right.
If I may add, there was something on the news regarding this too, and several are going beyond straws, as we've indicated, and they've given timelines for, I know there were some food trucks that were saying that it was going to be difficult for them because of how they order in bulk, and how they've got to dispense of those things, and then the, and the inventory has to go to the paper products. But it's just something to consider, just wanting to be conscientious.
Not to prolong this discussion, but it, it really gets, gets back to recycling, and Commissioner Gilliland is right on point, there's no place to recycle it. The United States hasn't developed a recycling program that's effective in handling the recyclable waste that's collected, and it is going in the landfills, because they can't, they can't get rid of it anywhere else. So just keep that in mind, it's a huge problem, it's a lot bigger than, you know, just Daytona Beach, it's a national problem, and, and we have a, we have a lot of protection in, in Florida, and requirements for recycling and doing things to, to reduce the amount that goes in the landfills, but all that's been really plowed under because of the inability to, to recycle the product that is collected.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Commissioner May?
Good evening, everybody. So this week, I received a few phone calls regarding First Step, and so I'm, I'm gonna ask a question. If anybody knows, that would be great. The question is, actually, it was, it was not a, is it on? I believe it is, yeah. It's on? It wasn't a question, it was more, I, there was a recurring theme in the telephone calls I was getting, not questions, just recurring themes. And the recurring theme seemed to be, who would be admitted into the First Step Shelter in terms of, would it be based on the cities that took a risk, and joined with us, and worked together with us from the very beginning? Would they have first preference in terms of admission, or would it just be everybody? And just, I can give you what I've been getting from phone calls in my area, in my zone. The response seemed to be along the lines of the cities who worked with us in the beginning, and joined with us, that they should be given first preference. I know that's not something we necessarily discuss, but I thought it's an opinion that you should hear anyway, since it came to my attention, right? The next thing is, when was, is the Riverfront Master Plan still valid? I guess that's my question. Note was done July 7th of 2010. Does it have an expiration date, or, or is it no longer valid? How do we stand with that? Do they expire? How does it work?
No, we continue to use those plans as we look at projects, and sometimes we modify them as we go forward, but we don't necessarily modify the plan, the plan's the basic document for, for establishing what goals you'd like to see.
And so, we established this in 2010, and our goal is to try to comply with this, because that was the vision at the time, and how much input do we have from the community at that time? Quite a bit, different areas?
And most of the time, we do have input. We have input at the time they did the plan, and it depends on the execution of the, of the projects, as to the kind of input. They all have public input here, at this level.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that we were on track with that. A lot of people worked very long on that project. As it relates to restaurants on Main Street, so I do have a question, and this might require further investigation. I would like to know how many restaurants we have there versus bars, and who has what license? I would like to know, is everybody, is everybody following the same rules, or is it a moving target? Because as we evolve, I think it's very important that we become very stable in how we execute the rules, and everybody needs to know what they are, moving forward, right? So, given that, Bike Review, Bike Week Review Plan, I think we're gonna have it revisited? Yeah? My question is, how many businesses are actually in operation right now, and how many days have they been in operation? And is somebody tracking that?
Capri, Police Chief, we check it every day, every night, which bars are open, and we go down and we do a checklist of who's open, who's closed, and we keep track of all that stuff. I don't know how many restaurants for bars are, I think, all I can think of is one right now, is at Cruisin' Cafe, the only I can think of that's a restaurant.
Probably three.
Yeah.
That I can think of.
I don't know. I know that we check every establishment, we walk it at night to see who's open, who's closed. I think we even do it two times a day, I think day shift and then night shift, but we have a complete tracking record of it that we can give you, a whole report.
And so, the shops there, there, there are some clothing stores still there, as I drive through there often, they're closed or open, let's say, for the most part, would you say?
I know that there, there's a couple of them that are open all the time. I think a lot of the empty storefronts aren't, but most of the businesses are open. But I can get you the whole entire report, breakdown on everything. We do it every day.
Our rule is 250 days to be in compliance.
I thought it was 280, right?
Two, 280.
280 or something, what is it, Steve? I thought it was like 280 to be on the master plan for Bike, for the Bike Week and Bike Toberfest events, to have the outside vending.
Right.
If not, you gotta have it inside, you can't have the outside vending.
And so, everyone's on track?
Yeah, it looks pretty good. I can get you the report, like I said, I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow, I'll get them to email it to me, and I'll send it to the City Manager, he'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Then, this weekend, this past weekend, I went to the NAACP Painted Land Enjoyable Event, met some people from Daytona Beach there, thank you for supporting it. And then July 12th, help have my date right, is the NAACP in Daytona. Tickets are available, do come out there. And then also, is Reverend Durham here? No. Any ideas on Soldier On? Where are we, are we still moving forward with that?
We've not heard anything since the last report we gave.
Okay, and then just to be clear, so that is supposed to be the next phase to First Step, and we are still on track with that?
Yes.
Okay.
First Step is, is on track to be open the end of September.
That's fantastic. Okay, good. And then finally, I'd like to just say a formal welcome to President Kreit from Bethune-Cookman University. Welcome, sir, to Daytona Beach. Good to have you, and we look forward to meeting you soon. Thank you, and good night.
A couple files, so that, that 250 day a year thing is what it is for, I think, I think it is 250, and it's what is, what their liquor license is based on. So you can't have a liquor license, a state of Florida liquor license, without being open that number of days each year. So we just adopted that for the people that do things outside, and I think we've got about, you know, there's some weird ones down like the auto parts store and stuff like that, that are clearly open 250 day a year, that do some things outside, but, you know, I, I haven't seen any recently that have been in violation of that, but the, the one wild card down there, Boot Hill, which is one John always likes to talk about, because supposedly they have a, a restaurant license, and they don't have a kitchen.
And I would like to know, I, I am curious.
That, that one's been hanging out there for years as, you know, possibly noncompliant use.
And so then, I guess, since I don't want to have a conversation with you, but why, if we know something, or we suspect something, don't we move forward and investigate it, or, I don't, I don't, I'm new, so I don't know any, I don't know.
I see Jim taking notes, so I think we're gonna find out.
We're gonna find out. I was, I didn't, I, I assumed they did have a restaurant, so.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing what happens.
We will let you know.
Super.
This is probably the fifth or sixth time that that place has come up as being not compliant.
Okay. All right.
Let's see, we had a good meeting yesterday, Jim and I met with the, the East ISB, you know, work group, Representatives Leak, District Five DOT Secretary Mike Shannon, some folks from the chamber, the, it was, it was a good meeting. The, the manager and, and staff had put together a, a letter back in February that went to FDOT about the proposed design, that had a lot of odd pieces of it included, and they made a few recommendations. A lot of, some of them had to do with widening the, the road more than what they were planning on now, that was going to drive the cost up and, and cause a significant delay. Those unfortunately could not really be worked into the plan, but there were a number of things, for example, I, I thought it was a, a ah event, when, when staff came up with, let's get the bike lane off of the street, and put it up with a sidewalk, make it a path, multi-use path on the south side, instead of just a sidewalk with on-street biking, and that gives us a little bit more land to be able to do some landscaping, for one thing. It was a one-foot strip of grass, basically, was what the landscaping was gonna be. So they've gotten that up to where it's a more reasonable, you know, design to where we could do some things that actually will look nice. I think that Susan sent out, a little before 5 o'clock, a copy to everybody via email, so you'll be able to see what the current, you know, section looks like for, for that plan as, as it continues to move forward. Let's see, I already talked about the integrated LPGA, the, so I, I met with the Chad Hagel from Space Square last week, he's the guy that's trying to do a project out there at the Home to Go Shopping Center. There's one project he's working in there, in the old Toys R Us, or Toys R Us prod, space, that is currently conforming use, and Jim is working with them on trying to get that moving forward pretty quickly. The, the other uses are gonna require a, a development agreement that, you know, expands the uses there to include some things. It actually is a very neat project, and I, I'm hopeful that we can certainly be attentive to this application that they've got in now for the, the Toys R Us space, but what they want to do out there is, they, they got a communications firm in there that makes circuit boards, and does, you know, they're, they're looking at the folks that supply parts to them that want to locate here, and the people that they sell to are looking at locating here as well. These are not huge corporations, you know, they might be, you know, 10, 20, 30 jobs, but they're very good paying jobs, and there's, he's, I was astounded when he was walking through, he wasn't giving out names or anything, or getting specific about who the, the potential tenants might be, but, you know, he, he has probably six or eight of them that are very interested right now. And one of them actually is coming over from the incubator at Emory Riddle. They've outgrown their space over there, and Rodney Cruz and that, that, that crew have gotten to, with, with Mr. Hagel, and, and talked to him about trying to relocate them over there and get them a little more space. So it's a great opportunity, I think, for us, and, you know, obviously the devil's in the details as we move forward, but I think that it's going to be something that could really have a real positive effect on, you know, some, some good paying jobs in this community, where we seem to end up with a lot of, a couple of management jobs[1722.56] community, where we seem to end up with a lot of, a couple of management jobs and a lot of, you know, $10-an-hour jobs. So, this, I think, would be a real feather in our cap, and we can continue to work with this group and move the project forward. And Bob did, at the last meeting, asked Bob to take a look to see, you know, how we did the agreement with Teledyne Research and Development, since they were a tenant and not the owner of the building. And he was able to find the agreement. So, it looks like there will be some opportunity for us to ask, you know, offer some kind of incentives that will be able to, you know, attract even more folks here, or the folks that are kinda, you know, iffy about it from a financial perspective, that we, you know, we can kinda knock their rent down a tiny bit. It might make a difference in them coming or not. So, you know, I appreciate your work, you're looking into that, Bob, as well. And other than that, everybody have a happy Fourth of July.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Just two quick comments. The sidewalks are being put in, in Zone 5, in Derbyshire area, in the Jimmy Anne, and they're coming along nicely. So, a lot of elderly people are very happy over in that area that walk back and forth. And the other concern is, I want to know how we can come to a meeting of the minds with regards to how nonprofits use our facilities. I am still deeply concerned about that, and I'm still getting many calls about that. And it is problematic in that they're still having to pay for the, to use the facility, and then vendors are still being charged $135 or something like that. And I know Jim and I, we talked about, we, it's a double-edged sword, because you have people who are using the facilities for high profits. So, they'll say they're having a party, and they're having a wedding or whatever, and then they charge people $20, $30 to get in, and then the city's property is not being used for the purposes of what it should be used for, and I get that. So, I want to know how we can come to a meeting of the minds where we put that idea to rest, but we also allow our nonprofits to be able to not have to pay those high vendor fees. One, if I'm a vendor, I'm not gonna pay to use for vendor fees, because you really wouldn't make that kind of money. $135 back is a lot of money to try and make back. And then nonprofits use those facilities, and then when they use the facilities, they use vendors to help pay for the event. Those events are good for every community, because they keep the children and the adults and everybody active, and so it changes the quality of life in that regard. So, I need to know, how can we come to a meeting of the minds? Our facilities went up this year. I know, coming from last year, when they had the Easter egg hunt, to this year, the funds came out of the Bike Week sponsorship funds, and it was an additional $50, which to me Derbyshire is not worth that additional $50, not in the position, not where it is right now. Now, as it continues to be redeveloped, sure, but right now, not quite so. And then you have nonprofits who are trying to put on events, and they can't afford to put on the events. So, that is my question, and I think I've been talking about this for a long time now. And so, I just want to know how we can not allow the people who want to just make a lot of money, and then allow the nonprofits to actually put on events and be able to pay for those events. And that's where I am with quite a few of the nonprofits that are calling me. I don't know if anybody else is getting calls from nonprofits, but I know I am, and I'm getting stopped wherever I am when I'm on city property about those. If I'm at my kids' event, somebody's pulling me aside and talking about the event that they're trying to have, and they're a nonprofit, and blah, 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 blah. So, I understand that. I get it. So, what can happen? What can we do? Where can we take this from here? And why are our fees getting progressively higher in considerate, when you consider the tri-city area? So, that's what I need to know. And those are my only two comments for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I think we probably should schedule a workshop to look at what our fees are, and what our requirements are currently, and maybe some suggestions that would modify that. Instead of, you could have a differential based on some factual evaluation of the application itself, and which might give us a way to do it. So, but we are recognizing that there's an issue there, and probably another thing we need to do is to be aware of who the nonprofits are. Because we have a lot of people that say they're nonprofits, and what we've found, what we've found, some of them, they may have a nonprofit in Orlando or somewhere else coming in, and that's some of the ones that we had problems with their motive.
I mean local nonprofits.
Right.
People that directly affect this community.
I think it's worth the workshop, really, to work on that.
Yeah, I think it's worth the workshop, and I think it's worth us coming away with something that says that if you're a nonprofit, I don't have a problem with the rules being different. For someone who's trying to do an Easter egg hunt, to serve 200 kids in our community, which is, an extension is more like a partnership with us. And that's the way I look at those things, and I always have viewed those as partnerships. So, we find a way to say that we're gonna partner with you, because you're doing something that is an extension of us. Okay? But if you're coming down here to have a birthday party for, you know, then that may be different. And then we have a certain, you know, if you violate, you know, what we're saying, then you're on the scratch list. We create a scratch list where you just scratch. You can say you're a nonprofit, or say whoever you are. But I think this is something that is long overdue, and it's called, you know, a public-private partnership, things that we do all the time on the business front. So, we need to be specialists at doing it on the nonprofit front, so that those people, because I have said this often, that there is no shortage of people in our community who want to do good, and who want to do well and do right by other people. And so, we shouldn't, as a city, come up short in helping those people to do those things. So, I'm all for a workshop, but I'm also all for coming away with something that helps to make this happen in a better way. Okay? Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Henry? Or some, Commissioner Reed?
Well, I concur with your comments, Mr. Mayor. In fact, that's terminology that I would use as a partnership. And I would identify those organizations that want to do things. You know, in our Divine Nine, we want to offer tutorial services. Those are things that the city can't do. We don't have the staff for that. But we can get those organizations to do that and be partners for us. And then also, I wanted to say, based on my comments earlier, I'm looking at our webpage, and the two things that I identified on the manager's update are not on the webpage. I think they need to be on the webpage, under our, what is this? That's swim lessons. Let me go back one. It's the general news items. We've got stuff on here from May, and we're talking about what's happening in July. So, we need to be a little bit more proactive in identifying what's happening now within our city, so we can get those two things.
Report's up to be online, the one that you have today?
Mm-hmm.
It will be online.
Yeah, the manager's report.
But we, the, two things you brought up need to be out soon.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. Thank you, sir.
All right, well, I think the fact that you just said that is perfect for my comment. First thing I want to say is that there won't be a mayor's backpack giveaway this year, so I think I'm a little late in announcing that. Should've announced it a month ago, but there will not be, for several reasons. First reason is that sort of the market is saturated with backpacks. We found ourselves having, at the end of our backpack giveaway, over half of the backpacks that we ordered were not utilized. And the second, and probably even more pronounced, is my own personal vision and view that I would like to see us move to a more of a direct service model of something that our kids can take away. And so, we're establishing and have already started a mayor's literacy initiative, which I intend, we intend to grow and evolve over the coming years into something that includes tutorial services. So, it would be an ideal partnership for them to just marry right into what we're planning to do. You want a tutor? We're looking for professional people who want a tutor, so that we don't have to do all of the lifting, but we have initiatives in place, staff in place, that's already trying to do some of these things, that they're not necessarily trained to be the tutors. So, that's one thing. And the other thing, a part of the reading initiative that we've already started, bringing in people who are writing and doing children's books. We've brought in one author who comes in with her package, reads her book, and then shares that with children. I believe that we have to have a total package of child development, youth development-type programs in the community, many of which we are not, we don't have to be experts at doing ourselves. They're already in place. You know, things like Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which many of our young people in our community who have children still are not signing up in Daytona Beach. And so, that's one of the things that we have to promote. Other things that are free, like the library. And all of this, I think, comes under our umbrella of supporting our children and helping them to develop the most critical academic skill necessary to be successful in our society, which is reading. Our library is a great resource for families. All you have, you don't have to go to the library. If you have internet, you essentially have access to most of what's at the library, or at least 60, 70% of it. So, those are the types of things that we're gonna want to be teaching and training. But we are moving to this new model. It's a literacy program, which I don't intend for it to simply stop at reading. Literacy is, can branch off into many, many different areas. So, when you have folks who come in our community, and they say, "We want to teach financial literacy to our kids," that's perfect partnership. And that's what we're talking about. So, the more people who want to partner under this initiative in a way that's congruent with the overall objective, which is essentially to enhance the literacy of young people who are under our guidance, in our programs, then the merrier. So, that's where we are, and I think that was a perfect segue. Second thing is, I posted on, yesterday or a couple of days ago, about a mayor's youth summit that is taking place in Los Angeles, California, from the 25th to the 27th, or I think those are the dates. But I will read this into the record, because I've only received one applicant, but I want to read the post into the record, and also for anyone who's on, watching via TV, or anyone in the audience who may know someone. It's a call for two youth leaders, two Daytona Beach residents between the ages of 18 and 22, who are highly motivated and sincerely civic-minded or needed. The two individuals will join Mayor Derrick Henry and represent Daytona Beach, Florida, at the Mayor's National Youth Summit in Los Angeles, California. If you're interested, or if you know any potential candidates, please share this information as it is time-sensitive. The deadline for posting the application is the 9th. This will be, their travel will be paid for as well as their room. The requirement process is an essay or answering the question must be submitted to me at henryd@codb.us by July 5, 2019. Please include your name, address, age, phone number, and two references, including their name, relationship, and phone number. The topic of the essay should address the following. What makes me well-suited to help lead the formation of a youth council for the city of Daytona Beach? Your submission will be reviewed by a committee, that's Ms. Goodman and myself, she doesn't know that yet, someone else. Youth on the staff, if you're selected, you will receive notice by July 8. So, it is a time-sensitive thing, but it's something that I encountered at a conference, and I believe it's something that is long overdue for us to have a youth council. They will come back and form, create the council, hopefully from throughout the community. There are several things that they will be trained in doing and asked to do when they come back to the community. I just thought it was a great idea and a way for us to engage our young people, both politically, but also civically, but also in what we do, so that their voice can be heard more here in City Hall. I think there's a vacuum, and there's a void, and a part of it is that we haven't done enough to reach out and say, "We want to hear from you. We want you engaged down here." It's easy to say it, but if we can get them involved in a plan, and then teach them sort of how you engage with us, how you review an agenda, how you look at things that may be important to you, then we may have more success. And then, that leads me to my final thing, which I will share with you all in the coming weeks. I also encountered a, there's a group that, you know, I talked to you all about us doing a survey. And we talked about it, but it hadn't really gone anywhere, because I am of the opinion that we want to hear from all over the community and know really what's being said, what people think about what we do, how they feel, what they want us to be doing, what's important to them. Our straw's really important. See, because after we have our meeting, a lot of what we talk about, there's a back channel of talk about it, okay? But we are not as privy to that channel perhaps as we would like. Well, there's a group that has a way of monitoring and surveying and doing all of that. And so, what I'm gonna do is share with you all in the next few weeks, some information from them. I'll share it with you via email. Don't respond back. Just the information that I'm sending to you, you'll be able to review it. I will then get with the manager. We're gonna have this group to come before us to spend about 20 minutes. They'll do it through Skype, going over what it is that they do. And it would cost us probably somewhere from $15,000 to $20,000, and we would have them do this for us all year long. Where they would basically be accumulating all of this data of what's being said about us via social media, via the newspaper, via articles all over the place. But they'll be more adept at explaining exactly what they do. But then we will have a broader voice to hear from, which is, I think, all of us would like to have that. But we will be able to hear from them and then make a decision as to if it's something that we want to move forward.
Basically what my wife does. That's what my wife does for me.
Mr. Mayor?
That could be painful.
Can I ask a question? With regard to your literacy program, how can the commissioners become involved in that? What are you asking? Is there anything that we can do to assist you in that program? Do you have a formulation of your literacy program yet? What can we do?
Well, you can just, essentially, staff right now is, they're operating, we're gonna, what we, our plan is, at the end of the summer is to take a certain number of kids, roll them over, and continue. It's very much in its infancy stage. But here's my thing. It's a literacy initiative, and this is, my whole point is, that I want it to evolve into what we as a commission and we as a community value. So, if you have an initiative, or you have something that you value that's related to literacy, let's see how we can marry it into this project. But for me, there's nothing more important than being able, for our kids to be able to read. And so, right now, that's where I'm starting. I'm starting with young kids, five, six, seven years old, where we're coming in, we're reading to them. We'll have people who have books come in and read to them and engage them, and then try to keep them in the program to continue that throughout the year, so that it's us touching them in an area that I think is critical to their success.
Mr. Mayor, Delta Sigma Theta has a program like that called School America. We'll be happy to read for you. And also, I'd like to share that our literacy program with Donna Banks, with Cornbread, we had 350 kids last week at the Midtown Center, largest group we've ever had. So, we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing. Did you post something about, did you have some questions about driving and suspended licenses?
Well, that was another question about driving with suspended license, and I'm gonna talk with Judge Schuman, and you'd be ideal for this, to see how it is that you could consider ways to say, because we have to think about, you know, I was at this conference, and I, there's just so many things that affect our citizens. And I've talked about this before, having like a conference, or not a conference, but a poverty simulation. But when a person loses their driver's license, it can be catastrophic.
Right.
You know, and so, but there are sometimes ways that the courts can work with them in the same way that they do as it relates to people having a criminal record, they can come in. So, my reason that I threw that out was to create a dialogue and to hear from people. It's just something that's really a problem in our community. I heard from mayors from like in Ohio, where it's very pronounced in their community. Ohio suspends people's license far greater than probably any other state. But, you know, to what degree is it a problem for us? And to what degree can we work with the courts to say, you know, guy has, a person has suspended license? How can we help them to get that reinstated, so that they know the procedures without necessarily having to pay all the money at one time, or whatever the options are that the courts may be able to? And Judge Schuman did sound off on that, and so I said that we would sit down and talk about ways that that could happen. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I heard you talk about the backpacks that we had left over from last year. And I was wondering if there was a way, and foster care has a program, I don't know if you know it, where the children usually leave foster care, and they, a lot of their times, their clothes are in bags, plastic bags. And so, they're constantly, foster care programs all over the country do it, looking for just bags, suitcases, bags for children. And I was just wondering if that was something that we could look into doing if we're not using those backpacks for our local foster children? If that would be an option, if anyone would be interested in that?
I'm not sure of the number of backpacks we have left. There are none, zero. He's already giving them all out and sent them away to other folks, which is, you know, no.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, you and I have partnered in the last few years with the backpack giveaway and the activity for children with the Unity Community. and the activity for children with the Unity Community Part for Children. Would you all be interested in helping to support a back-to-school, like, summer splash something for the kids, although we can't give them the backpacks? Just something, a fun, blow-ups, rides, kinda something? 'Cause that, we had partnered with that, in doing that. I think it still would be nice for them, summers over, some kinda something in the park?
Yeah, I would be happy to contribute and try to support that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'll start working on that.
But we should have something to say that, because for me, I said to the students, I always say to them at all the backpack giveaways, that this is our way of saying to you that school is important.
Mm-hmm.
It's your most important gift back to us, it's doing your best, because we need you to be, and we still want them to know.
Mm-hmm. That it's important.
Going back to school is important.
Exactly.
So we don't wanna lose sight of it.
It's gonna be a back-to-school summer splash.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Manager, you have anything? I know I talked a lot, but I, trust me, I got at least a thousand other things in this head right now, that I hope are gonna come to fruition over time. But I'm very excited about, you know, where we are and where we can go, what we can become. And so let's keep striving.
Mayor, I would like to take a moment, if I could. I'd like to introduce Kira Haunt, who's in the audience. I'm putting her on the spot now, but if you wouldn't mind standing. She's a new hire for our office. She comes to us from Vero Beach, where she was the acting city attorney. She's had experience at Fort Walton County and Charlotte County. She has a broad array of experience in local government, so we're happy to have her. She's handling purchasing and also real estate transactions.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I read her resume, and I was very impressed, and we're excited and delighted to have you. You do a good job getting the people you get, our sharp folks. Okay, all right. This meeting is adjourned, and we will take public comment immediately.
Immediately.
Opening between the two, and Boot Hill Saloon. Those are the only two bars that are legal in code. They're called Four COPs. All other ones are restaurants. The bar that you had mentioned, Boot Hill For the Problem, is not Boot Hill. It's Main Street Station. They have no kitchen. They have a restaurant. Two, I-95, we were supposed to have a sculpture, and I know when it was presented, this big, huge silver thing. I'd like to know where we're at with that, because we're almost finished. Three, regard to the library, there is a section there called the Launchpad. It's fantastic for kids. Kelly brings her kids there every day, about 12. It is fantastic. If you have children, take them to the Launchpad. If you're intelligent, and can do computers and take things apart, they also have a group that meets there. Landscaping on A-1A, again, I was a bit embarrassed when the e-gamers came. We did a good job on the, on, and whatnot, but the landscaping, the trash, it builds up. The trash cans were not emptied for two weeks, gave us a bad impression. Jimmy John's is opening in the next two weeks. It's on A-1A, right across from Ocean Walks. Fantastic landscaping, Queen Anne Palms, Great Myrtles, a lot of distinctive, very nicely done. The building next door to it, repainted, added a new roof. The building next to that, upgraded. Building on the other side, painted. So that little section is really dynamite, but unfortunately, it's surrounded by the city of Daytona Beach, who's failing to maintain coats. There's like about five or six feet on coats between Jimmy John's and the Ocean Center, and it's full of trash and weeds, and I've been working on it for a year to try to get it cleaned up. Butler is in really bad shape, so they have all this nice new asphalt, and then people coming from A-1A have to drive over this really badly maintained road to get to Jimmy John's. I would ask you to pick up the trash, there's a...
Thank you, sir.
Jude Box I'd like to get rid of before they open.
Our next speaker is Antoinette Nolan, and on deck is Demond Nolan.
Good evening. City officials, Mayor Henry. My name is Antoinette Noelian, 11 Little C Lane, Palm Coast, Florida. I'm an involved parent. For the past four years, my children have been participating with the Daytona Express Track Club. It's a youth track and field club. The club promotes, the club promotes, ah, the club promotes good sportsmanship. It's a diverse organization, as well as they teach the kids to make and achieve goals that they set. This season, I'm proud to announce that we have nine athletes that have earned the right to compete at the Junior Olympics for the 2019 AAU in Greensboro, North Carolina, July 27th. We are desperately in need of assistance with funding to help get the kids there. Right now, we're projecting our trip cost is gonna be about 6,500 that we're gonna have to try and secure. Right now, we are in the process of having fundraising that we are doing. We have reached out to local foundations, we've reached out to local businesses, we have reached out to different constituents in the community that are personal donors. I want to invite the city of Daytona Beach to financially support the organization again, to help these kids get to North Carolina. Again, we've estimated 6,500, and that will go towards the rental of a 15-passenger van, the gas to get North Car, to get to North Carolina, the hotel lodging, the meals for the kids, and any unexpected expenses. Along with the rest of the parents, we also have parents, as well as coaches, in the audience as well. This is a very good organization. We keep the kids very civic-minded, and they do give back time. They are all good in school, they have very good GPAs. And I just wanna let you guys know that they would really represent Daytona Beach to the fullest. Again, it's the AAU Junior Olympics that they had to earn the right to qualify for. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Demond Nolan, and on deck is Bobby Kood.
Do we have contact information for Antoinette? We do, from the, we can contact her from there? You have a letter?
You can give that to the Assistant City Clerk, and we'll make sure the commission gets a copy of it.
All right, so my name is Demond Noelian, I'm piggybacking off of what Antoinette was just saying. I've been in Daytona since 1995, came down to Cutman to go to school. I've worked with youth since 2004 in different aspects. Basically, mentoring, sports, I've coached football, track and field. This group of kids has been a great ambassador for the city of Daytona Beach. I've worked with them for the last four years. We've gone many different places, Orlando, Isola, Tampa, Jacksonville. And they've always represented this city very well, with manners, good sportsmanship. They work, not with them, not just with themselves, but with other people that's not even part of their team. So I want you to know what you're, what you have here. You have a good group of civic-minded, young people that we need. Because when you turn around, look at the state of young people nowadays, a lot of times, you see just the worst, when right here in this city, you have the best. So in thinking about trying to help them go to the Junior Olympics, they worked very hard to get there. They've done everything we've asked them to do, they've done everything their parents have asked them to do, everything their schools have asked them to do. Like she said, mentioned earlier, you have honor roll students, you have National Honor Society students. And a lot of these students, and these athletes, come not just from one section of the city, but they are spread over the city. So it's not just one zone, but it's multiple zones that these kids are coming from. Just to let you know about the organization, like you say, we do do positive things. They have, we've done a Need to Know Your Law class for the students, for the athletes, so that they can better represent themselves when they come into different situations. And they've shown that they can do that. We have athletes right now that can be top 10 or 8 in the nation, and that's right here in your own backyard, in your own city. So we just ask that you take the time to really think about it. They're here, they represent us well, they represent the city of Daytona very well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You've given us a price of 6,500 for the trip for everyone. Have you all calculated this, like, if we wanted to sponsor a child?
Well, she...
I'm sorry, what did she say?
Individually, we have not, because like I said, it's just, it's nine kids that are, that are qualified, that are trying to go, and we're just trying to see if we can help them all, because everyone does not have the, and like I said, it's a week in North Carolina from July 27th to August 3rd, and they have multiple events on different days for each of the kids that they qualified in.
How many of your kids actually live in Daytona?
The majority of them live there. If you count, my kids are, and also, they don't live in Daytona, but they go to school here. So my son goes to Campbell. And he's, he's been, he's one of the ones on the National Honor Society. So...
And if he goes to Campbell, he probably...
So out of, out of 50 kids, 40 of them are Daytona residents.
And if he goes to Campbell, he's probably not zoned for Campbell.
No, he's not zoned for Campbell. 'Cause we, we, like I said, we've been in Daytona for a long period of time, and I work here, so he goes to school here.
I'd like to donate 250 dollars from my Bike Week funds towards that organization.
Okay.
And I can do 200 from my Bike Week funds.
Okay.
Okay. Our next speaker is Bobby, I believe it's Kood, and on deck is Jim Cameron.
Bobby Kood?
Mm-hmm.
Scared of it for creaking and cracking. This is the second time I've ever been in this room. The first time I came, and I waited, and waited, and waited, and waited. Waited, 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 so here, 10 years later, I come back, yeah. Waited, 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 waited. I want to apologize for that, but I think you're doing a great job. You're listening to all these stories, you have to internalize them, then you have to respond. It's a very hard, and a very important job, and I appreciate that as a citizen of Daytona Beach and Volusia County for over 60 years. But I'm here tonight, kind of an emergency. I have a very good friend here, the Captain Capri, he's your captain now, he's the Chief Capri, he's number one. He's done wonderful things in the time he's been here. Right now, we have a problem at the Daytona Boat Basin. Do you all know about, have you ever heard about Rondalee? Rondalee, have you heard it? Rondalee, this is your city. Rondalee sits over there on the Seabreeze Causeway, and all the tourists that come over the bridge, they look over at the Rondalee and wonder, why don't they remove that wrecked boat over there? It's been there, it's been there. I live on the waterfront at 519 North Halifax. I know everything about that area for the last 50, more than 50 years. I'm, I'm the man that watches the illegal fishing that come there, and I run them off. Get out of here, this is a sanctuary. These are where the baby fish, the mamas come and give their babies. Get out of here! And they say, "You, you." That's all the power I have, but I can't help it. I'm trying to be a good citizen of Daytona Beach. When I came here in 1951 as a fresh college graduate out of Oklahoma State, I said, "This is where I wanna live." I've lived here ever since. I'm now 94 years old. I love this city. There's no better city than Daytona Beach. The best beach in Florida is Daytona Beach. And why they stop that using, I like them to say, "The world's famous beach." It is the world's famous beach. We've got the best beach in the world. Why don't we advertise that? They changed it to something else. I don't know. What the hell is that? Really? We've got, we've got the world... I have a cousin in Oklahoma, I was born and raised in Oklahoma. Incidentally, to the chef, to the, to the chief over here, I relate to him because my grandfather, not my father, my grandfather was a policeman. He was a chef, deputy chef. He attempted to make an arrest.
Thank you, sir.
The guy had a shotgun, and they said, "Go arrest him." And he went out there, am I tying him up?
Yeah, your time's up, sir. Thank you, though.
Let me say one thing.
Go ahead.
Rondalee should be removed, but put a camera on it, because the people robbed my boat twice in two weeks, right here. And I'm sitting there, watching the most awful thing, those derelict boats are full of people that have, I have manatees there, and I look at them.
Just come back and...
It's human feces.
Thank you, sir.
They should not live in those boats.
Next meter.
Thanks.
Come back and see us again.
Our next speaker is Jim Cameron, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber. Also, just wanted to let you know, I gave Allison, she's gonna be getting you in your box, a little flyer here for our upcoming event. It's called Expanding the Aerospace Footprint in Volusia, Daytona Volusia Now. And this is something, though, that somewhat connected to remarks earlier Commissioner Gillen had made in relation to Space Square, but we're really putting an all-out effort to try to put more emphasis and bring more of these aerospace-type companies here to Daytona Beach, Volusia County. We've got a great lineup of speakers, including, like I say, Frank DeBello from Space Florida and others. So we're aiming for companies to try to come here, though, and then anybody that make and talk to some of these folks, we'd like to get them locate, located here in Daytona Beach. So that's one item. And then also, wanted to mention that we're working right now on legislative recommendations for 2020 Legislative Session, and we're working with Hardy Smith on that, so I sure appreciate that there as well. And then, wanted to mention that you might have gotten something from me earlier today regarding the new Sam's Club that's gonna be opening, that's gonna be on July the 24th. I might have said in my text, and Paula, you might have seen in my text, so it said 5 o'clock. That may be now 4 o'clock, but I'll get back in touch with you to confirm that, though, for sure, though. And also, quickly, wanted to mention earlier, I was one of the ones that had talked with Commissioner, like I say, Quanita May. Chamber, we've talked with other cities in regards to funding for operations for First Step Shelter. This was previous budget year, and, including Port Orange, Ormond, and we lobbied hard for that, though, and we said, "There will be room at the inn." If you have somebody from your city, and you, one of your police officers brings them there, you will have room at the inn. So we wanna make sure they get preference.
I don't think y'all have to worry about that. Shelter's for the people who are participating in the shelter.
Good.
Go ahead, participate in the working.
Thank you, Mayor.
Greetings, I'm Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'm here tonight to say that I have put in a public records request three to four weeks ago, and no one has responded. I need them to respond to these public records requests, that is part of the job. Okay, last week, they had a meeting here. The Fire Department, Allen, came in and added something to their agenda which was not proper, and they got here and praised the commissioner. Well, I have no praise, because my area, Midtown, they pour all of the streets, cracked up, big holes, not fixed from 2012 to 2019. That's seven years, and I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of coming before this commission. This is why I walk out, because you people have taken us off of the agenda, and during the meetings, and put us to the inn. They don't do this in Ormond, they don't do this in South Daytona, they don't do it in Hollyhill, they don't do it at the school board, and they don't do it at the county. Recently, I have been appointed to three county boards, Human Resources, the Library Board, and Children and Services. We distribute millions of dollars to different agencies around here. I'm the only black on the Library Board. At the first meeting, I advocated to have that library open on Saturday, and to extend the hours, like the other libraries, and they did that, like, boom, immediately. The library is now open Saturday from 9 to 5. It had been closed for years. It's open Monday through Thursday from 9 to 7, when it had been open at 10. It's open on Thursday from 9 to 7. This is progress. We want you to respond to these public records requests, we want you to... We want you to respect our citizens. We want you to do your job that we are paying you to do. Service is the price you pay for the spaces you occupy. You're sitting here holding space, but our streets need to be paved. And we don't care about speeches and, and, and social stuff. We want you to do your work. Thank you, we would appreciate you doing that.
Ms. Johnson, um, our staff has tried several times to get into contact with you unsuccessfully about your records request. So if you want to check with our office on Friday, I believe the record request has been sitting waiting for you. Okay? All right. Actually, if you can give Ms. Brown a, a good contact number, make sure that we have a good contact number for you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. Um, two things tonight. One, uh, since you mentioned the plans, um, the Riverfront Master Plan was developed in 2010, and construction was due to have begun in 2015. So that is not a plan, and we may be working towards that plan, but I'm thinking now of the rec center in that plan. That's supposed to be a parking lot and bathrooms. I think that these plans are well and good, but they need to be revisited when they're that old. They get stale. And I think that's an important consideration to take into account when considering the, the city island rec center. It, it needs to maybe change the plan. So I don't want to see the rec center demolished because of a rigid view of a plan that was developed and not implemented, you know, and it's five years old already, past its expiration date. Um, the other thing is that I was very lucky, and I got to attend Code, CompStat and Code Stat today. And I have to say, the Code Stat meeting was phenomenal. And one of the things people have been asking for, begging for, is proactive code enforcement. And it was brought home with some very great charts and graphs presented, um, at that meeting today, that they are being very proactive and doing a wonderful job. So I want to thank the, um, Code Department for that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Good evening, city leaders and fellow citizens. I'm Jenny Nazak, 501 Harvey Avenue. I want to thank you all for bringing up the matter about plastics, single-use plastics, straws and other single-use plastics. It, the problem really is staggering, and, and I'm very happy to help with any kind of research or anything about that, or, or about any ecological topic, really, but, you know, since we brought up plastics, it's a really big thing. That said, we can't put it on the shoulders of our government to do all of this for us, and there are many grassroots efforts to reduce single-use plastics. There are groups of, um, environmentalists in our multi-city area, and we are starting to recognize restaurants that proactively do certain policies that encourage people to not use single-use plastics. And so there's many fronts in which this is going on. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank Commissioner Reed for bringing up the social activities, because the social activities in our core urban area are the best kind of economic development, and they actually help the environment, too, because the more development and activity we direct toward our core area, the less we need to sprawl out. And it's, it's much more efficient, and it makes for a cozier city, really. What else? Water. It was great to see the informative video about the Bennett Reclamation. And also, there are citizen groups, again, the environmentalist groups, that are encouraging, um, water conservation and wise use on other fronts to help keep pollutants out of our bodies of water. We are right now trying to see about getting more public compliance for the existing fertilizer regulations, for instance. And also, trying to encourage more people to collect, collect rainwater and use native and adapted landscaping. So those things are all going on. And I will keep emailing you about various things that don't fit into my 2 minutes and 30 seconds. Then, let's see, Friday, July 5th, I will give a solar cooking demo, solar cooking and energy independence, at the Breakers Oceanfront Park Environmental Learning Center. And then Wednesday, July 10th, I'll be on the radio with Dr. Durham on the CODB Radio Show, talking about, I will talk about water use and conservation.
Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis, and on deck is Ted Horedeki.
Good evening again, Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, USA. I read the paper today. One of the very, very strong government lawyers, Barbara Peterson, had an article in there, talking about what she does with the Florida First Amendment Foundation. She basically said, politicians have grown increasingly brazen about shutting out the public. It's printed in today's New York Journal. That reminds me of this room, and how we have been shut out of being watched, speaking about public comment in Daytona Beach. That is the First Amendment Foundation saying we're being shut out as citizens and boaters. Read the paper. That's the strongest thing I gotta say. Now, with more walkers down ISB, and more traffic coming with all the new homes coming around ISB and 95, and especially with Ormond Building, too. The First Step Shelter is gonna need a new traffic light to have people coming in and out of that very first building on that side of the road. You're gonna have accidents there regularly by somebody trying to cross that road to get to the bus. Are pulling out, going especially to the land to go to work or something. That's gonna be needed. They're already talking about Champion's Way. That's been 10 years, 12 years, or whatever, to get a traffic light there? The reclaiming water is awesome about the, uh, environmental impact. I'll just leave it at that. And I love the guy from Oklahoma City. I grew up out there. 94 years old. He's probably one of the oldest people that's lived in Daytona Beach. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ted Horedeki, and on deck is John Birch.
Hi, I'm Ted Horedeki, 113 Bredock Avenue. Uh, not looking for handouts tonight, sorry to disappoint you, but I need information from everybody. I, for Lady of Lords, we have a veterans group. What we do is we made resource sheets for the police department that they give out. Everywhere in Volusia County, free services, uh, shelter, food banks, so on and so forth. And we've given out maybe 4,000 or 5,000 of them to people in need. And now, it's come to our attention, what I'd like to do is get everybody to put their hats on. What we'd like to find out is all the places in Volusia County where you could go for mental health, whether it be, uh, outreach center, uh, counseling centers, so on and so forth. What we want to do is incorporate it into these sheets that we give to all the homeless and all, and all the people in need, that they, one, in every six months, we go over the sheets. Anything that's not open, we get rid of, and we update. But I know there's a lot of resources here. If anybody could think of any numbers or where people can go when they have problems instead of the county jail, maybe we can get them counseling. So what I'm looking for is any kind of resources. You guys could give us phone numbers, people we could contact with the county, uh, you know, uh, local groups. But, uh, I think it should be on the list, cause there is a need out there. But what we gotta do is get the information out to people, so they don't end up in, uh, in the county.
I can give you two recommendations, sir.
Yeah.
I recommend you contact Rhonda Harvey at SMA. She's on Palmetto. Um, and they have a, a wide resource, uh, link, that if you contact them, they have other places you can send them. And the second thing is United Way. They also have a list of volunteer agencies that can direct you as well.
Okay. And anybody else could think anybody, uh, we'd appreciate the resources. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is John Birch.
Thank you. 101, how you all doing? Wake up, I'm here. And what I want to do is spread, first of all, I want to congratulate each and every one of you all. Your job is tremendous. You all have to listen to us, and at the same time, you all have to do an analysis of what do you agree upon. I wanted to come tonight, and I wanted to come because of Mr. Henry, the mayor. I like the mayor. The mayor and I attend the same church. Uh-oh. And he know the complex that some of our people in the, I'm gonna use minority communities have, that most people in the minority community bail out. They're dealing with the minority, they're staying in their neighborhood, they then move to his neighborhood. Uh-oh. Now I have to go there. And the reason why I have to go there? Because the police came to my 836 Orange Avenue. I don't care what nobody say, I would die. My mother and I had that relationship. I seen her clean floors, you know, back in the days, everybody think this is real. I'm gonna tell you about how hard black people had to work in this time. It happened. I can deal with it. I got a slavery picture that I sent to chief. I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is when the kids of the mothers and daddies who work so hard think they better, and they got to move out. I have a problem, I'm stuck. I'm stuck like truck. So what I'm trying to say, Mark Luther King, shoot the bullet, do what you gotta do. Bobby Birch ain't right, them girls ain't right, my mother told me what to do. I don't, I have nothing to give you. You know me and you got a issue. Like I told you guys, call you, they, they won't let me leave today. I would not leave 836 Orange Avenue, Mr. Henry. I'm letting you know that. Bobby Birch needed to block me himself. And I know it's hard for you to understand that. I'm, I'm, I work. I can do a piss test here, and I'm drug free. The big people that you think on drugs are not on drugs. The people who you don't think on drugs are on drugs. I work hard for my little pennies. I made millions. Praise your Lord.
Thank you, John.
That was our final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Happy Fourth. Uh, may the force of independence be with you.